We're gonna get started at about 6:05, so in about four minutes. We're having a few technical issues, so we will get started a little bit late. I apologize for the inconvenience, but we will get started as soon as possible.
Congratulations for that. Awesome. Yeah, just send it to me and copy more, and then that way both of us have it. But that'll be so much fun.
Oh, awesome!
You have to tell me about how that is, because I've always wanted to go. Huh, that would be fun. I'd love to go, yeah. Christine and I have talked about doing like a trip to New York or something, and going to some of that stuff, and we just have not made it out. And it's like, we gotta, well, I was telling others, like, when I heard about Steve Pass. I've had people who come up to me like, "No, I'm at that age where I could retire, but I love what I do." I'm like, "Go, enjoy life, because look at how quickly it can disappear out there." So just go enjoy, you know? So, and I tell Christine, like, "We need to enjoy that while we can." So... Yeah, and so...
Then that becomes like, so what do we want to do? The world is our oyster finally. We recognize that the Hogan Administrative Center occupies the land of the Ho-Chunk people. Please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Ho-Chunk land and the sacred lands of all indigenous peoples. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Here.
Ms. Baumann?
Here.
Ms. Burkertal?
Here.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Here.
Dr. Garcia?
Here.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Korberg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Excused. A quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of May 2nd, 2022, is called to order. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the Board. With a motion by Mr. Korberg and a second by Mr. Abraham, we will approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Is there a motion to amend? Hearing no motion to amend, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion has carried, and we will move on to public speakers. It is the policy of the Board to provide at its public meetings an opportunity for individuals to address the Board. Comments about individual staff or personnel will not be allowed. Open meeting law prohibits the Board from engaging in discussion or responding to matters not included on the agenda. All speakers are reminded that this same policy limits your time to speak to five minutes. This limit will be strictly enforced, and I will be asking the superintendent to please keep track of the time and to notify the speaker when the time is running out.
I believe so.
Thank you very much. You're also asked to give your name and the school district where you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record. Our first speaker tonight is Michael Dayo.
Hello, my name is Michael Dayo, and I'm from Central High School. I'm a proud member of Central High School Show Bar, Book Club, and Video Game Club. I am also proud to be part of our school district's special education program. I know that each and every person at this meeting today is dignified and valid, which brings me to my first point. I have had the privilege to have had firsthand experience with any of our SROs, including that of Central High School and the former layson of Lincoln Middle School. I cannot express the amount of gratitude to Officer Ron Secord for his help during my middle school years. I've seen the many tasks that SRO officers have helped with at our schools, including but not limited to assisting in school security, providing mental health assistance for students, assisting teachers with various tasks, providing much-needed help for our underfunded and overworked special ed programs, and bonding with students over a shared love of sports and other recreational activities. Thus, it is true that our SROs are accomplished and respectable people that are valued in our school community and beyond. Furthermore, I would like to address concerns about SROs not being adequate to handle student mental health. I believe, however, that is false. The SROs are people too and can advise us on situations we might not understand with all their experiences and from having worked with the student body and administration. Next, I would like to address concerns brought up by the LIT organization at a previous meeting regarding the central SRO petition I am affiliated with. One point I heard brought up at the last meeting was that school resource officers promote a violent response to student activity instead of helping with restorative justice. However, I would argue that the SRO community does not encourage violent response but rather helps get the most accurate information possible in order to get to the root of the problem. I must admit that I myself have been involved in a few incidents on school grounds and can confirm that our officers have helped determine the cause of the situations rather than respond with outright violence. This means that the assumption that SRO officers resort to immediate punishment when incidents happen in school is simply not true. In fact, the punishments were indeed decided by the school administrators themselves rather than the SROs. The school promised to provide restorative conversations within the people involved. However, the school administrators failed to provide this opportunity for me and others, and several members in our group can attest. However, time and time again, the officers have stuck with us and provided a consistent source of comfort and counseling for me and hundreds of other students of all gender identities, races, and other diverse groups. In fact, we have many colored students actively supporting the SRO petition, including, among others, Manny Carrillo. Several of our members are also part of the LGBTQ community, including Mason Muth and Jacob Markland. I myself am autistic, along with a number of other disorders. Therefore, I can safely say that we have a very diverse community of people supporting our group. Additionally, if the officers were to be removed, I believe our school would be more open to violent acts. Despite the fact that mental health would have improved, it will not stop students from getting into trouble. Believe me, I know because I used to participate in such situations throughout elementary and middle school. For example, what happens when there is this bomb threat and we have no officers to warn us? What are counselors going to do when a school shooter breaches the building? Who will rescue me when I'm injured or hurt in school violence? And who will come to help when the school is threatened? As someone who used to get into trouble left and right, I've tried talking to a counselor many times, and so far, all but a select few have failed me. They are too focused on telling me what I should be feeling and my test scores, as well as other things to be of adequate assistance towards my mental health. Several of my fellow students feel the same way about this. Just the other day, I heard from a friend about how they tried talking with administration and our school counselors about a bullying issue, but all they did was place them in ISS for a day for quote-unquote "creating drama." For too long, the administration has been ignorant and uncaring with how they deal with our many, many issues. School resource officers on the other end have taken students' needs seriously and are available almost all the time, unlike our administrative counselors. Each and every school in this district has made false promises of safety to us, and I empower you as a school board to follow through on these so-called promises and unchain us from these fears. All in all, I believe that the SROs in our schools have done much more good in the community than they have done harm. Thank you for your time, and respect to all.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker? Our next speaker is Eric Martin.
Thank you for having me. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Eric Martin. I reside in the school district of Onalaska, but I am a proud product of the school district of La Crosse. I think that you would want to take credit for that. We'll see. I've taught at Logan for 19 years, and I'm here to present a letter that's being passed around currently that our staff wrote in support of bringing back our school resource officer. So I'm kind of reiterating what you've already heard. First of all, I'd like to say that at Logan, we really are a family, and that culture of caring and kindness isn't unique to our building. All teachers care, but there's something about our building that I think is just different, and our SRO is part of that, and the loss of our SRO has been felt acutely by our staff. Ethan Perkypile, our current SRO, has to be one of the kindest people in our building. So the first myth I'd like to kind of address is that the SRO is someone that's out looking for trouble, to bust kids, give out tickets, and it's just not true. I have lunch duty at Logan, so I literally see everything that you can imagine. And I think more often than not, Ethan is probably too nice. I'm joking a little, you can't be too nice, but he does have endless patience, and that allows him to build relationships with kids that translate into the ability to diffuse situations when trouble does arise. And without getting into specifics, there were a couple big issues this year that wouldn't have turned out so well without our SRO on duty. And when the officer is out of the building, we lose that resource. Ballparking a little bit here, but I know Heath Graves, when he was our SRO, was probably in our building about 80% of the time. Sometimes you get called out to another place or you have meetings. I would say that Officer Perkypile is in our building about 25% of the time right now, and I know a lot of staff are just crossing their fingers that if something happens, it's when he's there. And so it kind of feels like we're rolling the dice a little bit when our SRO is out of the building. Losing the SRO gets me to the next point our staff would like you to hear, namely that it's turned Logan this year into a building that's reactive rather than proactive. On a day-to-day basis, we're really busy with the big issues, and it's hard to get our hands around the smaller issues. So to give a specific example of that, we have a pretty big problem right now at Logan with vaping in our bathrooms. I'm not sure why you would want to do that, but there's a big problem with it in our building, and we really don't have the staff to attack that the way that we should. Similarly, you know, bad language, disrespectful behavior. Sometimes that doesn't get the attention it deserves because we're too busy with the big stuff that has to be addressed immediately. What that means for us is it's hard to build a culture of learning when the school is constantly dealing with discipline and behavior, and I don't think that that is equitable for anyone. That gets me to the last point our staff would like to share, the issue of equity itself. The SRO was reduced clearly for good intentions. We're trying to eliminate the school-to-prison pipeline, but I feel like that concept isn't really indicative of what's happening at Logan whatsoever. Our SRO is not willy-nilly writing out tickets, searching lockers, busting kids. Our administrators aren't handing out suspensions like candy. We have a caring building, and we want our kids to succeed. We agree, in theory, a building probably shouldn't need a cop in it, but in theory, if all people were angels, we wouldn't need a government either. If we look at the real roots of how kids fall through the cracks and end up in jail, I think it's important to look at statistics, which is that in the U.S., more than half of all children have experienced some sort of trauma in the form of abuse, neglect, violence, challenging household circumstances, and about 35% of kids have experienced more than one type of traumatic event, and that's according to the Centers for Disease Control. I'd argue at Logan, that might even be higher, to be honest. And so realistically, I think we have an abuse, neglect, home life-to-prison pipeline, and what happens inside Logan is reflective of what's going on outside of Logan. Our school, with the help of Officer Perkypile, is one of the few places that continuously strives to counter all that external negativity and neglect. We should be a place where every student finds an abundance of sensitivity and support, passion, and purpose. Unfortunately, taking away the SRO has made that a little bit harder for us to do. We need more help more than ever, and this year, we got a little bit less help. Staff burnout and low morale is perhaps a topic in a speech for another day, but our staff is feeling it, and discipline is part of that puzzle. The SRO is an example how staff in my building feel that we're often told what we need rather than listened to.
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
I've got about one paragraph left.
I appreciate it, but the time is up, and we are holding the time as strictly enforced, so I appreciate it. But we do have your letter. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Our next speaker? Our next speaker is John Havelcheck.
Thought you were gonna say me. My name is John Havelcheck. I live at 333 22nd Street South. There was actually a time, I don't know if any of you remember, when the Board used to say it with me, because I was here so often, it was kind of funny. First, I want to congratulate and welcome to the new Board our new members Meredith Garcia and Katie Burkertal. It's always nice to see, nice to see a former Central kid. And I want to congratulate Board President Juan Jimenez on his reelection. We look forward to working with all of you to do what is best for our students, our teachers, our families, and our community. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to express my appreciation for all the employees who have been working through such a difficult time in our careers. I think it's important to recognize what folks have been doing this week to make us feel appreciated. Our administration has been around delivering coffee and so forth, which is very, very nice, and has been donated by local businesses, which is very, very nice. There have been social media posts. I've received some emails from parents and former students thanking me for the job that I do. Of course, it's really more than a job to me, it's my calling, and these little pick-me-ups have been very nice. But I'm really here to talk about what has been done to educators over the last few years, not what is being done for educators this week. Educators have been working harder than people realize. It's not a sink-or-swim mentality with our students. We've been challenged to get every kid across the finish line. Our goal is to make sure that every student succeeds. Every educator I know is on board with this, and we've been doing everything we can to make it happen. But I don't know how we can continue to get every kid across the finish line when the district isn't even getting its employees to the starting line. Every day, we adapt to wildly changing circumstances. We implement new learning programs, new record-keeping systems. We broaden what we do and how we do it for the sake of our students, both academically and emotionally. We are living through a sea-change in education, and there's no going back. We are going to live with the repercussions of the last two years for a decade or more, yet the district isn't willing to compensate us for the new world in which we teach. Two years ago, when the Consumer Price Index Urban, the CPIU, was 1.8%, the district forced a pay freeze on us. In a very real sense, that was an inflationary pay cut. Our pay didn't keep pace with inflation, so in terms of buying groceries and paying utilities and paying medical bills, we lost ground. That's not the way to attract and retain high-quality educators. Then last year, the CPIU was 1.23, and we got an adjustment that kept pace with inflation, but that really wasn't a pay raise, even though we were asked to do more, more, and more. We had a new course management system dumped on us days before the start of school. We learned terms like virtual synchronous learning and had to become experts in a matter of days. We learned the tech skills to operate across multiple platforms using multiple devices while still trying to meet the needs of a diverse student body in a changing profession during the most difficult years in our country going back decades, if not a century. As this year started, we were asked to reimagine our curriculum, reconfigure our lessons, and break down everything we know how to do to learn to do it in a different way. And of course, we still came to work every day and did our best for every student. We are tasked with meeting our students' needs, all while our own needs sometimes go unmet and maybe even ignored. We've been ignored, demeaned, and in some cases, physically attacked in our jobs. We are told to take care of ourselves, but then we're told we won't be paid like the professionals we are. For me personally, the district is again offering me an inflationary wage cut. This year, they are offering an even bigger cut than they offered two years ago. They are telling us that our wages will lose almost 3% to inflation. In my case, the district is offering to me that I should work harder. I should unlearn what I have learned over the first 24 years of my career so that I can relearn how to do it differently. I should meet the needs of every child, no matter how extreme, and accept that my wages will lose almost 5% against inflation. And based on how inflation is rising and predicted to continue, I could lose another 5% or 6% next year. The icing on this cake during Teacher Appreciation Week is that my insurance is going to get worse too. You need to do better by your employees. If you can't, then just cancel Teacher Appreciation next week, week for next year, because you can't tell us you appreciate us and then force us out of the profession we love because of worsening job conditions, decreases in benefits, and then inflationary pay cuts year after year. You gotta quit telling us you appreciate us because it's starting to ring hollow. The district can do better, the district needs to do better. Please do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We will move on to the agenda to our recognitions of the student artwork selections. And turn it over to Dr. Engel.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez. At this time, I will have Ms. Lisa Schreiner come up and introduce our program.
Thank you very much. We're gonna do things a little different. If you've been around for a while, we're just gonna do a little different this year, just for safety. So each spring, we celebrate the importance of creativity and education and the education of the whole child through artistic experiences, through the different displays of student artwork throughout the community, and at tonight's Board Recognition. So thank you to all the students whose artwork is on display this spring. If you have not had a chance to get all around town, there's still opportunity. This Friday, particularly, the high schools will be at the Pump House. So nothing better to do on a Friday night, because it'll probably be raining anyway. Thank you also to the art instructors for their inspiring efforts in the classroom and work in making the public displays come together. Thank you to Board members and administrators for participating in the selection of student artwork. And congratulations to the students whose art was selected as part of tonight's recognition. So selected artworks will be framed and replace what we've already... It's kind of sad and drab right now, right? So we will be replacing that so that it can be enjoyed over the next year. So what I'm going to do is I'll call you down. We'll have you come down, we'll get a microphone. Hold on. And then we will have you call your, we'll call your artists down, and you'll have an opportunity to tell them why you chose their artwork, share their artwork with the group, and then we'll just kind of follow through with everyone. And if there's somebody missing and somebody wants to do theirs, maybe, that would be great. Thank you. So, Dr. Engel, come on down. I just had to.
I'll do it, I'll do it. He sent me.
Check, check, sounds like it works. So I had Hamilton Elementary School and Zenaya Cypher, not here. Okay, well, I would love to describe her work and show it. Excellent. I thought her work conveyed so much emotion, and it really stuck with me even days later. And for me, that is one of the signs of great artwork, is something that leaves you thinking. And it really struck me, and so I'm thankful for her artwork. As I walked through the building, it jumped out at me, and I couldn't stop thinking about it even as I looked at others. So incredibly impressed with that and thankful she was able to share it with all of us.
We love you, Mr. Engel.
That's great.
Dr. Engel has a second one as well.
Can I take the artwork?
Oh, that's a shame. So the second one was from Zuri Wilk at Soda One, and this one spoke to me as well. It was very graphic, and the contrast of colors, I thought, was wonderful. And mostly, it was the smile and the bubbles that left me just happy. And artwork that makes you happy is good artwork. And so, so thankful that Zuri was able to share this with all of us as well, and I look forward to looking at it here in the boardroom every other Monday.
Dr. Jimenez, would you do Mr. Spivey's, please? And this is from Spence. And is Smith here?
Oh, there she is.
Is this Anna? Hey, Anna. How are you? You want to hold your artwork? So, uh, Mr. Spivey had Spence Elementary, and this is Anna Quackenboss. And he chose her artwork because he said it was extremely creative, and it reminded him of a nice day outside, and the painting dots were like Claude Monet. And so he was so impressed and excited by her artwork. Do you want to share anything about your artwork?
I like the little purple flower. It's like one of a kind.
Congratulations, Anna. Congratulations.
And next we have Annie Baumann. And this will be from State Road. And is Estha here? Is Estha Carlson here?
Come on down.
All right, so I had State Road Elementary, and I chose Estha Carlson's beautiful mixed media. The thing that really drew me in was, I mean, there's lots of things. It really sets this super cold scene. We have snow. We have rainbow birds. And the birds are all kind of fluffed up with big eyes, like they look like they're very cold. So I just loved that, that feeling and that sense of a winter scene. Do you want to say anything about your art? No? Okay. Great job.
Okay, next we have Patty Spring. Oh, look at, from this awesome school called Southern Bluffs. And Casey, if you want to come up. And Nora? She is. Nora, you want to stand up here with you?
So I chose Nora's landscape. Those were my favorites. I narrowed it down to three, but this one really caught me because I love the beach. And that, I had imagined that I was driving down the road and saw that beach, and I needed to go there. The only thing I wondered about that fish in the water, is that a shark? So I really enjoyed it. And I congratulate your teacher for inspiring you all. So thank you.
All right, and Stacy Iverson, Director of Secondary Ed. There she is. And she selected from Hinchin. So Mr. Oldenburg, if you wanted to come down. There he is. Oh, he's down. And, um...
Hello. So, this was so fun, by the way. I selected Leisha Zhang's artwork. Is Leisha here? Leisha, come on up. What an honor it was to view your artwork. So this is the Mushroom Kingdom from Hinchin Elementary. And if you notice all the wonderful detail here, I thought this, this drawing just emanated joy and happiness. And all of this detail made me think it was magical. So I walked away with this magical feeling, Leisha, about your, your artwork. Thank you. Do you want to talk about your artwork? No? Okay, well, it's wonderful and magical.
You're gonna want that for your graduation party.
Okay, Shelley Sherrill, our Director of Elementary Education. She selected artwork from Emerson. And Alena Mills. Is Alena here? There she is.
Come on up here, sweetie, right here. There you go.
I loved your piece. So when I saw it right away, I saw how vibrant it was, and it also reminds me of our region with the water and the bluffs and the sunset. And so then, in further discussion with your art teacher, Ms. Hochschild, she told me in class that you've been working on warm colors and cool colors, and also on how to put a horizon line in there. So I saw all the things that you've been learning in class and how you incorporated that into your artwork. So it's very beautiful. Do you want to say anything? No?
All right, Dr. Cooperstall has selected from Northside and Cooley Montessori.
Would you like me to bring both down?
If you would like, you can, or you can do the steps twice. Your, choose your adventure. So we have, um, two teachers, Amarena Rathke and Casey Sherrill from Northside and Cooley Montessori. And you gonna start with Jocelyn?
Sure.
Jocelyn Hornbeck, is she here?
Come up here, honey.
Well, I'm beginning to sense a theme this evening in the selection of pictures, because first of all, when I saw yours, it really made me dream of warmer weather, bluer skies, flowers blossoming, the trees. And I just love the way that you chose this particular color palette, and it felt very cheerful and something I'd like to look at over the next year. Is there anything you want to say about your art?
Well, I love it.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jermaine Davis here. Would you like to hold it right there? You go right ahead. So I selected this because, at least in my experience, there's not a lot of three-dimensional art that is selected and for, for this evening. And what I liked about it, in addition to just the very bold colors and the three-dimensional nature of it, is also there were little things about it, like I think this looks like a muffin tin, like up here, and so there's something unconventional about that. I think, yes.
It's basically, it's like an old, um, like, so basically, there's the old chef that he made this with his muffins.
Oh, wow. Well, I sensed an unconventional nature about that, which I really like. Is there anything else you can tell us about the art?
Yeah. So basically, what I thought of was, I was thinking mostly of like, like maybe like, uh, like a restaurant where you could like see the inside, where they like, like cooking. And then he's just an entertainer, inter, inter, entertainer. And then, so he would just tell you funny jokes, and he's just standing there.
I love that. Well, thank you for letting me display your art for the next year.
Thank you.
Jermaine, my understanding is those are like pop-up shops, right? That was the assignment, to do a pop-up shop? That's cool. All right, Mr. Corberg, selected from Summit. And the Summit teacher I know is not here, nor is the Summit student, unfortunately. But we will celebrate their art.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, I saw this piece, and I liked it for a number of reasons. Number one, I would have bombed if I would, whenever I tried paper mache back in elementary school, and I never would have gotten anything to look like this. I also kind of liked the three-dimensional aspects of artwork. In fact, the first year where I was on the board, um, I think like seven years ago now, I picked a three-dimensional piece and kind of got my hand slapped because it was sat on my, in front of me. It was a, a three-dimensional piece of pottery that, that was a hamburger. And, um, I thought it was pretty cool. So, see, it stuck with me, so it must have been pretty cool. Um, but I, I saw this attention to detail. I thought it was really cool that one ear was up and one was down because that, to me, said the fox was listening to me or was listening. And I really liked that aspect of it. I think, too, uh, the, one of the reasons that I thought kind of put the whole icing on the cake was that, you know, we know Summit's the environmental school, and this is an environmental piece. And that's another reason that I liked it. So, I wish she were here. It's, the student is Sydney Shown, or Shane, I'm not sure how to pronounce it. But, um, I hope to get up and say, see her in Summit one day to congratulate her on a great piece of work that she did.
Thank you. Dr. Jimenez, you had Northwood. Taucher is here as well. And the student is Jackson Lamerson.
Jackson. And there is so many amazing pieces of art at Northwood that I narrowed it to six. And I still couldn't choose. And so I worked with Ms. Taucher, and I said, could I interview the students? Could I have a conversation with them to try to figure out which one I should choose? And when I sat down with Jackson, his fire was reflected in this painting. He's a, his painting was just a brilliant reminder that even through these last two years of the pandemic, our hearts are still full of fire, and they keep burning bright. His energy and the fire in his eyes are definitely reflected in the painting. And I hope that this painting brings to others the same warmth, the same care, and the uplifting spirit that Jackson brings and brought during our interview. So thank you so much for sharing it. Is there anything you want to say?
Yeah. So, I did all this work at, at school, and I just do this all days. Every single day at school.
Awesome. Thank you, Jackson.
All right, Ms. Garcia. This is Longfellow. We have... Both teachers are here, yah, yah. And the student is Ella Barrett. Is Ella here?
So I chose this piece by Ella. I really loved the color combination. I thought it was gorgeous. I liked the contrast of the soft watercolor with the precision of your lines. I thought that was really beautiful and balanced. It's got a couple of flowers that are in bloom, and that made me really happy. It's got one here that's bent over, and that made me a little bit sad. And then it's got a couple that are still waiting to bloom, and that made me really hopeful. Um, and I went to see the art on a day that was kind of like today. It was gray and a little drizzly and a little colder than I wanted it to be for April. Um, and it just gave me a lot of hope for the spring and summer flowers to come. So thank you for your art. Would you like to say anything about it?
All right, Ms. Burkadall chose art from Lincoln. Harrison Patasko? Harrison here? Awesome. And your teacher? Hannah here? There she is. Your teacher's...
I chose this piece of artwork of Harrison's because obviously, it's The Simpsons. And who doesn't love The Simpsons? I also narrowed it down to about three people and sent the three finalists to my husband, who's an art teacher at Analaska High School. And he also agreed that he would select this one as well. This piece, to me, shows levity and fun in the midst of chaos. It resonates with me because that's how I try to live my life. And although the world seems overwhelmingly chaotic, a lot, it's important to bring light and happiness into our lives as much as possible. So that's what this piece represented to me. Do you want to add anything? Thank you.
All right, Lahe. Yes, come on down. She had Logan Middle School. Ms. Sikora, I know is here. And Elise Rank?
Who is cute colors girl. My daughter doesn't have the crowds, so.
So I chose Elise. And I also went back to the library multiple times to take a look at the art. And when I would go home, I would think about this piece. And I just loved the vibrant colors. I loved the, I saw a different detail every time I looked at it. And then, uh, another reason why I really appreciated it was that it was something beautiful, created out of, and recycled out of something that has been used before. So I just thought it was a gorgeous piece. So please tell her that. I just really appreciated her, her artistic work.
I will say, uh, we have six pet birds at home, and my daughter has been making bird art since preschool. That was the inspiration.
Dr. Harcy. Oh. Okay, and this is from Central High School. Um, Ms. Oshenbrenner is here. And Georgia Galvin, is Georgia here? This is pretty impressive, Georgia. If you want to hop up.
So, Georgia? Beautiful work. So Dr. Harcy could not be here tonight, but he wanted me to make sure that he shared the sentiments. So he said it was a genuine honor to select artwork from Central High School this year. Educator Lori Oshenbrenner does a wonderful job and inspires the students. So many works of art at the Pump House gave me pause for deep reflection and evoked all kinds of emotions. All were excellent and inspiring work. Georgia Galvan's sketches, though, captured in this book, which she also made, entitled Human Spirit, appealed to me deeply and profoundly as he reflected on both identity and humanity in our world. The sketches are truly moving. Thank you, Georgia. And then he said that maybe you would like to say a few words about your inspiration and Leonardo da Vinci.
This piece was inspired by Leonardo da Vinci, as she just said. I liked how he always like had the people looking downwards with their eyes. So I wanted to change that up and focus more on bringing life to the eyes. And, um, I want to include more diversity in my drawings since a lot of his looked very similar. So, yeah. I also want to thank all of you guys for just supporting the arts. It means a lot.
Okay, and Mr. Abraham had Logan High School. And I know Mr. Beck is here. And Bryn Bennett, is Bryn here?
So I was happy to be able to select from Logan. I'm a Logan graduate. And as I walked around the Pump House, this eye kept following me. And my attention kept being brought back to it. And I actually snapped that, this picture and another picture to my wife to help me figure out which one to go with, and, and she agreed the eye. But the reason why I ended up selecting the eye is because... But the reason why I ended up selecting the eye is because, as a board, I feel it's important that we know that we are being watched over by the public. We don't have the opportunity to have this type of crowd normally. So, it is nice to have this interaction. But when we don't have the crowd like this, I thought it'd be nice to have the student eye watching over the board do their work. And I also chose it because I believe, well, and my perception is, the Equity and Inclusion Color Wheel and the Eye. Is that why you did that? Okay. So, I also like the tip of the hat to that as well. So, thank you. It's a very nice piece.
Thank you. Those, that concludes our presentations. Thank you for the time tonight. One of the things that I know is that, you know, there will be a time of year when test scores will come out. And what you won't see or hear about is what you saw tonight. And we need to spend time talking about, looking at, appreciating, and valuing what we saw tonight. And our, the teachers who work so hard, from K on up, to instill and grow that creativity, which then affects all of those things that everybody else thinks is important, but really isn't as important. So, I thank you all for your time this evening. Thank you, families, for bringing your kids here. Thank you to the teachers.
Thank you very much. And we'll allow some time for those audience members who were here for the presentations. If you wanted to leave the room, feel free. Yes. All right, we will move on with our agenda. We will move to 4.01, the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that the members want to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, with a motion by Mr. Corbrigg and a second by Ms. Leahy. The items on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda are approved as presented unless there is some objection. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection. We have approved the Superintendent's Consent Agenda and we'll move on to the Board Consent Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
So, with a motion, oh, excuse me. Are there any items that the members want to remove from the Board Consent Agenda? Hearing none, with a motion by Mr. Corbrigg and a second by Mr. Abraham. The items on the Board Consent Agenda are approved as presented unless there's objection. Is there objection? Hearing no objection. We'll move on. Those are approved as presented. And we'll move on to 701, Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE12 Facilities. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez. I'd just like to start by talking about operational monitoring just a little bit with a few quotes from our book, The Art of Governing Coherently, to just kind of help guide that. I know some folks are new, and so I just want to cover, like, why we do some, why we do monitoring and why it's a large part of the work that we do. In the book, it indicates that the superintendent is required by policy to monitor operations, including reasonably interpreting the board's policy language and complying with the policy values. The board has already defined its standards and delegated that operational authority to the superintendent. And so, now it's incumbent on the superintendent and the administration to demonstrate that we're following through. The purpose of operational expectations monitoring, stated simply, is to assure the board that the CEO and staff reasonably understand the values underlying the board's policies and to provide database evidence that the organization is operating in a compliant manner. Systematically monitoring OE policies is one of the board's most important functions and one to which it is committed in its job description. And so, I just wanted to start there as a why for operational monitoring. And so, this first one that we're bringing for this board this year is OE12 Facilities Monitoring. And while I in my office am ultimately responsible for everything, I have very knowledgeable people, we have very knowledgeable people that work for us, who are capable of fulfilling this monitoring report, guiding it, and developing that information to present to you today. And for that, we have Mr. Joe Lavina. But first, I'll turn it over to Ms. Patty Spring, who oversees business services, if she has any words in addition.
I just would introduce Mr. Lavina, and he will go through it all. It's all the work of his department, and they do a great job.
Just a couple of thoughts as we get started. As I walked in tonight, I said to Ms. Spring, you put Buildings and Grounds on the agenda and see you have a full house. And I figured they found out Michael LaHecky was next, so they all left. That's the way I figured. In all seriousness, every year I present at this award thing, and I think anytime that we start talking about bricks and mortar and meeting the letter of the law and the things that we have to do, it's nice to be reminded why we're here. And I said this last, last time that I was in front of us, and we had young students come up and talk in front of the board. It's amazing to me, the work that our students do. And so, we're doing something right in the school district of LaCrosse, right? Want to introduce to you Scott Johnson. Scott Johnson is Buildings and Grounds Manager, works with me there. He's put together some of these reports that we're briefly going to touch upon, and he'll be available for any questions if you have them. Okay? So, what we're going to do is move through the OE12, looking at facilities. Basically, these reports are done for last fiscal year, so they run through July 20th through, of 2020 through June 2021. What I will try to do is walk you through each area of OE12 and then just talk briefly about that. Some of the things, I'll go into detail a little bit more. What you'll see through this whole report is there are samples of reports. In other words, if we were to put everything out here, you would have hundreds and hundreds of pages, but they are available for you. So, the first thing I want to turn to is OE12.1, Develop and Execute a Facility Plan That Establishes Priorities for Construction, Renovation, and Maintenance Projects. If we look at Indicator 1, what I have in front of you and given you is the Capital Improvement Book. And I just want to touch on that, page 3 and page 4 briefly. Because we have new board members, I'd like to welcome you to the school, school board. I just wanted to cover a couple of things briefly with you. That we do have a process, and I know this is a review for some of you, but if you look at our process, what we do every fall, we sit down with every building engineer and building principal together, and we go through this Capital Improvement Book, and we look at the projects that have been identified. So, we get, go through that to see if those are still legitimate projects that we want to see happen down the road. We evaluate those. We discuss any potential new projects that they may bring forward. And then, what we do is prioritize those projects by school. And then, we take that process, and we do that at every school and bring them back to the table and prioritize those. Any projects that go into the book, we do estimates, and then we include them inside the book. We add them to the, the capital maintenance improvement database that we, we keep, which we are able to do the reports off of. And then, we bring recommendations to the board every spring. And that we did at the last board meeting. We have a decision-making criteria that we use, and we look at safety and security. Are there any things that we need to do immediately for the safety and security of our staff and our students? We look at any regulatory compliance that may be out there. We look at board initiatives. So, over the years, the board has given us initiative to, when it came to secure entrances, for instance. We put millions of dollars into that. That was based off a board directive. And then, what we do is we look at maintaining and learning environment in our schools, and then consider priorities provided by individual learning teams, and consider operating costs. And then, lastly, want to bring things to you that the public will support. We never want to bring anything to you that's controversial. We want to bring things that you can support, that you can defend as you make those decisions. I want to go to page 4, the next page, and just kind of go over the summary with you. The reason I want to do that is because you look on there a five-year plan, and then we have on there no timeframe. Amounts about $102 million. Pretty significant, significant increase from last year. That's all due to the facilities assessment that we did with Bray Architects and all the projects that we identified. Some of them were already in there, some were new. And so, when we added that for those six schools, now the list is up to $102 million. Any of those things will go off the board if we approve our long-range plan. Many of those things will be reduced by quite a bit. You'll also see inside the book, when you look at individual buildings, and I'm not going to go through those with you, but what you'll see is some of those are additions to accommodate closing down different schools, options that we looked at over the years. Again, if we do the long-range plan, many of those things will go off the table. If we look next to Indicator 2, it's a list of completed projects that I gave you. This happened in the middle of COVID. So, this is kind of a different reporting year because of that, less major projects, but we did some, some smaller projects. You'll see in there asbestos abatement that goes along with flooring. We updated all the entrance cameras in all the schools. But the next thing I want to bring to your attention was the Central Athletic Locker Room. That was the locker room that was probably in the worst shape of, was the worst shape of all of our locker rooms. It was, it was original to Central. That was all done with private donations. So, it was a project that was just under $100,000 that was donated by individuals. If we go to Indicator 3, it says, all schools have had a conditional assessment annually. Again, part of the process when we meet with principals is we walk through the facility, we walk on top of the facility, every roof, every playground, everything gets assessed on an annual basis. And so, that's incorporated into the capital improvement process. If we go to Indicator 4, what you'll see in there, preventive maintenance was performed on air filters, unit ventilators, electronic controls. What I gave you is copies of preventive maintenance contracts that we have with contractors, primarily Johnson Controls and Complete Controls. And so, you'll see those preventative contracts in there. Indicator 5, Safety Walk-throughs are reported monthly on each building, indicate there's no injury or life-safety-related concerns. What you'll see there is we do a playground safety checklist. We do that monthly at every school. Our building engineers do that. You'll also see the report that we give to the state, the DOJ, that we're required to do, that we do on an annual basis. So, all the, all the activities that we have done to meet their needs are given to the state. And then, you'll see a safety tip list. So, we have a safety hotline to address those real issues. So, those are all evidence in that. If we go to OE12.2, Project Life Cycle Costs As Capital Decisions Are Made. This last year, because of COVID, we didn't do any of those projects, so there are no system replacements last year. However, the board knows that we will, next year's report, we have a couple of them that were being done right now at Central High School, upgrading HVAC, but that'll, that'll be included in next year's report. OE12.3 ensures that facilities are safe, cleaned, and properly maintained. If you look at Indicator number 1, all inspections have been passed in accordance with all codes. Whenever we do a construction project, we have to take out permits. And so, when we take out those permits, that triggers inspections, the inspection process. And so, whenever we do those projects, we have had inspections and we have had no issues as it relates to that. Indicator 2, the district completes all scheduled maintenance. What I gave you there was a sample of what happens at each school, but we meet quarterly with our contractors and go over projects that have been completed. We go over potential new projects, red flags that may trigger some things for cap, future capital improvement projects. And so, you see that quarterly report in there as well. Next, if we look at Indicator number 3, District Maintains Work Order System. We have a work order system that all staff have access to. I gave you an overview inside there of what happened last fiscal year. So, we completed 1,751 work orders. So, all staff can complete that. It goes to the individual, whether it's trucking, whether it's our person who does our crafts person, or it goes to a building engineer who can correct those problems, or it will go to our office where we may need a contractor to come in and do that. But all those are addressed every year, and each staff person has the ability to do that. Indicator 4, During Student Occupied Hours, 100% of facilities use their controlled entries and signs, sign-in process for all visitors. Gave you example report, that's from Raptor, what that looks like. And so, every school, we updated those entrance cameras this last year. That was one of the projects we completed. We also are in the process of incorporating Raptor, that you see the report that's on there, the person's identity, where they're going, what they're doing, and so that is in there. If we look at Indicator 5, it says, 100% of identified violations per fire department were corrected and restored in compliance. You'll see that. A lot of times, what will happen is when the fire department goes through, most times if they do find a violation, because it's one in nature that maybe a staff member has too many things plugged in, or they're covering an electrical box, or whatever it is, most of the time, the action is completed before the fire department leaves the school, so that we don't have those ongoing safety issues. If we look at OE12, ensures that facilities are made reasonably available for public use as long as student safety and function. And so, you'll, first thing in Indicator 1, you'll see the School Use Facilities Policy. That policy is out on our webpage. Anybody who wants to use our facilities can fill out a form online that goes to the school first, where it's completed, and then it will go to Buildings and Grounds. And then, if there is a fee that's required, then we work with the business office in making sure that a bill is sent out. But everyone has access to that online and can get at that fairly easily. Number 2 is Use Request Process and Rules Are Easily Accessible to the Public. Again, that's all in line. There's a report for you that you'll see in front of you that I'd like you to look at very briefly. I'm going to pull that up so I can go through that with you. This is a report that we do annually on a regular basis. A little bit different this year because it's OE12. It used to be a standalone. One of the things I want to bring to your attention, that we're about 20,000 hours short because of COVID. We're seeing that pick back up since COVID, but really, we had a lot of reduced use of building use because people were not using our buildings. If we look at Indicator number 3, the 2021 fiscal year, there were no known major issues as it relates to individual programs. And then, Indicator 4, no reports were received indicating facilities were not returned to pre-rental condition. And the last one is Indicator number 5, facilities were monitored by Buildings and Grounds Staff. Anytime an outside organization or our students are in the building, we have a Buildings and Grounds Staff there to assist them in using the, the public facility, but also to put things together, put, take things out. Let's say that we had a fire alarm system to go out, or a water leak, or whatever it may be, so someone's on site to take care of that. We monitor that very closely. The people who use our facilities, the public, is very respectful of our buildings. We do not have any issues with that, or have not had any issues as well. 12.5, the board values the major renovations. Building construction plans are shared and approved by the board. Anything over $100,000, I would bring to the board. During that fiscal time, we did not have anything that, that needed to be brought forward to the board. They were all minor projects. Twelve point six, land acquisition. We did not acquire any land this last year, but we do lease. We leased the parking lot at Century Link for Polytechnic. And one of the things that with Polytechnic, hopefully, one day we will bring forward a land purchase acquisition for that. Hopefully, we can do that soon, but we have several years left on that lease. And twelve point seven. Authorized construction schedules and change orders. Because we had no significant issues or projects over a hundred thousand dollars, we did not have any change orders to bring back to the board. I'd like to go back to the long-range plan and hand that over to Dr. Engel. But before I do so, any questions on anything I have as we go back to that piece?
Any questions from the board members?
Okay.
I have a few. I have a few, Mr. Ladvina.
Okay.
So. At twelve point three, indicator number two. When you say the district completes all scheduled maintenance, I know that in the budget, we have a budget line item for maintenance. Is that what we're talking about when you talk about all scheduled maintenance? Is just what would fall under that budget line item, correct?
Yes, yes. And there's some other line items that might be included in there, but that's the majority of it.
That's what I thought, okay. With twelve point three, indicator number four. The student occupied hours, a hundred percent of facilities, you talked about the Raptor system. I know that Hogan, at this point in time, does not have that system. As Hogan comes offline and we move to Central.
Yes.
Is that something that will be considered as we create a new entrance for the administrative side?
Absolutely. We'll have a secured entrance there. We do have a secured entrance here now. We're not using Raptor, but we do have a secured entrance, and we are the last building to have that.
Sure.
Yep.
And then OE twelve point four, number one. The district maintains facility use policy eighty-three hundred. I just noticed that the policy had not been reviewed, I think, since 2017. Is that something that is on to be considered to be reviewed?
Yeah, we have a policy review committee that the superintendent leads, and so, we're going through right now and doing all that. I don't know when this one comes up, but it is scheduled to come up in the future meetings.
I was thinking, just with COVID happening, it might not be a bad time to take a look at it.
Yes. And one of the things that happens with that, just so you know. It does not put in fees in there. It just says a fee structure and how that's done. So, that's updated on a regular basis.
Sure. Those were all my questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to the superintendent to talk about the long-range plan.
So, we have a policy review committee that meets quarterly to review our policies. And so, on a two-year basis, we'll have reviewed every one of our policies. And so, that will come up here in the near future. OE twelve point one, indicator six. District develops and maintains a long-range facility plan. I have a plan attached there. It's essentially a summation of the last two years of work and going out to the community, our survey work. It explains the current conditions within the school district as it relates to declining enrollment, excess capacity in our aging buildings. References, the Applied Population Lab study, our community listening session presentation, and then a lot of factors that are listed in Ms. Spring's wonderful budget book. And it also indicates the financial opportunity we have as the school district pays off existing debt from previous referendums. It goes into the long-range facility plan development and how we conducted an assessment. Met with Bray Architects. How we took some options to the school board and went to survey with our community. And then it identifies some strategic options for administrative buildings, our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. So, a range of things that we could approach. And then the last page is a right-striking strategy. That is the one that's more modular and optional as we move forward. That's the current strategy, focusing on our secondary schools first. And inquiring with our community through this next survey if one high school is a viable option. And then talking about also opportunities that may arise with our elementary schools. And then the future closure of the district office here at Hogan Administrative Center. Any questions about that indicator?
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, any questions are always appreciated. We also know that it is a lot of information that may or may not be familiar to each of you in your various previous roles or understanding moving forward. So, you know, any questions are good questions as we think about this. And then, you know, as we move forward, this next time we meet, there's an opportunity to think about, does this information that we presented meet your expectations? Is there more information that would help you in making good decisions about monitoring? And are there different ways to present it that would meet your needs as well? Our goal with operational monitoring is to present you with the information that allows you to properly assess whether or not we are meeting your expectations, so.
So, at this time, for our new board members, what we typically do at this point is just take an unofficial poll from the board to see if we feel okay with the recommendations as they have been presented from the administration. You know, if there aren't, or if there are concerns, I should say. You know, let's share those now. And then at the next meeting is when this OE will show up on the consent agenda, unless there are concerns, and then we will want to bring it up for discussion. And then we could discuss it at that point in time. There's also an opportunity to bring forward changes that you might want to see at that point in time as well. So, are there, is there any concerns at this point in time with the recommendations as they've been presented?
I have no concerns.
Okay. Not seeing any concerns from the board members. So, then we will move on then to the results monitoring report, R three point six, involved citizenship. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Engel.
So, once again, a part of our monitoring process, results function a little bit differently than our operational monitoring. Whereas with our operational monitoring, it's really a did you or did you not do it? With our results policies, it's a more, are we making reasonable progress? And through COVID, we've had some interesting conversations about how do you measure that? How do you understand that in this environment? And so, similar process, but slightly different benchmark for reasonable progress versus not. And, you know, this book actually covers, you know, floods and things that might disrupt things. And the fact that progress isn't always linear. And so, it's a, just, it's a harder measure than yes or no. And it really takes some thought and some careful consideration, and we appreciate all of that. With R three point six, this is one of the last areas where we've, since the board has established their expectations, where we've been able to follow through, I think, with an assessment that we think will hit the mark. And for that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lahucki.
When Joe Ladvina made the joke about everybody leaving because I was going to present, he wasn't kidding, I don't think, because he just left before I presented, so unbelievable. All right, well. Yes, the results policies. These are a little bit different than the OEs. Results policies two generally are your academic ones, your test scores. As we, a common theme we heard earlier, our kids are more than test scores, right? And that's where R three comes in, where we look at active citizenship. So, the board has developed six different value statements that we then actualize into the school district of La Crosse. When I think about R three, I think about four different, I don't know, entry points that we could look at for these results policies. The first level would be intent. Meaning, hey, here's some books that we might have in our libraries, or activities we would do in a class. The second level would be perceptions. How do you feel about a particular topic? The third level is generally where the board has directed me to go. And that is application, or a application of learning, so that the learning is measured in some way. So, it's not just presented, but to come back with data that these results policies, the R threes, demonstrate learning in some way. I would say the fourth level is actual application of the learning. That is pretty hard to measure in, you know, is it the quantity of people that come and speak at a school board meeting? Maybe. Is it the depth of information that they share when they present? Maybe. So, generally speaking, I've stayed at level three, which is that demonstration of learning. I would offer the same opportunity that Dr. Engel did with the OEs. If the board wanted to investigate some different levels to generate more data, that could be a discussion that we would have. So, R three six specifically is to demonstrate awareness of the ways historical and current systems of oppression work together to produce injustice, as well as identify strategies to address these systems of oppression. We look to find the most students that would be exposed to this and measure. These sort of conversations happen on a daily basis in our schools, especially our secondary schools. But to come up with that system of making it part of the curriculum formula, and then collecting that data, that's something we continue to work on. For R three point six, we looked at eleventh grade in our English eleven course. One of the titles that is read, it's actually a play, it's called A Raisin in the Sun. And it's directly aligned to these particular concepts. After classroom conversation and after the items are presented, it turned into a writing task for students that was then evaluated using a rubric by teachers. You don't see the full rubric. It'll have, you know, conventions and organization and different generalized writing prompts. But specifically, the elements related to the board results policy three point six are reported for you today, which are an awareness of historical and current systems of oppression and strategies to address systems of oppression. Those two elements of rubric directly relate. There are four elements, no minimum evidence, approaching, proficient, and exceeding. Of course, we want our students to move towards proficient and exceeding. And this presents a baseline opportunity for R three point six. In the future, we do have some social studies standards that are identified. Work is ongoing to develop those common assessments and to find what class makes the most sense to formalize those assessments in. I anticipate by this time next year, you'll have more robust data. I do want to point out, though, if you look at the numbers, they're lower than you would anticipate. We have more juniors in our junior class than are represented here. So, fortunately, we have a lot of students that take AP English. Once, when students go to high school, their pathways sort of change, and it becomes harder to capture one class that has all the students enrolled in it, especially when you get into your junior year. Our charter schools as well, it's harder to incorporate a specific text within it. So, this is an opportunity for us to grow even within our juniors to make sure that all students get this opportunity to demonstrate their learning in something related to results policy three point six. So, I just wanted to point out those numbers because it is a growth opportunity for us. Do you have any questions about this results policy?
Any questions from the board?
So, you addressed the question that I was going to ask, which was about whether or not all students had access to this. So, what are your thoughts about how to address that going forward? Since there will be different texts and activities, do you have some thoughts at this point?
Well, it's basically the process we did with English eleven. We meet with teachers, we talk about what are the resources. See, the goal is, we don't want new. We do a lot of this work already. So, we look at what are the resources you're already doing? What are some ways that we can just formalize it? We were able to, for English eleven, it was a really easy match. For our AP English and some of our charter schools, it wasn't as easy. It's not as easy. So, that's, we'll just have some discussions of how can you meet the AP criteria and still infuse learning related to this particular topic that can be actionable? So, I don't know if it will be as clean as having one rubric with all the students in it. It might have to look different for each of the classes because the text might be slightly different. I just don't know at this point. But that's one of our areas, along with social studies, to expand this. If we are to stay in that realm of the demonstration of learning. I could, you know, it would be easy to give a survey and get a perception of where students are at. Or, as I mentioned before, just to list things that we might do. So, this one's a little more challenging.
Other questions?
My question was basically the same. Just noted that, like, a hundred twenty-five students is pretty low. Next year, we'll probably see more. Are you looking at other grade levels to try to capture a bigger snapshot of students who might be engaging in those conversations or activities?
I went for lower hanging fruit. So, our eighth grade ELA was results policy three point five. It was a good match there. This eleventh grade was a good match. Our social studies, you know, what are some grade-specific things we can do there? Ideally, as we build this ship, as we go, I'd like to see every grade represented in different ways. It might be ELA, it might be social studies. You know, I've mentioned art as a potential avenue as well, because it doesn't have to be those two particular content areas. It's a heavy task.
But I think we're moving in a particular direction, because at least this evening, we have one example of one assessment that has been done around it. So, it seems like we're at least moving towards our end goals.
Yes. So, part of, I would say, the dilemma we find ourselves in with standards-based grading is this kind of extended runway that, you know, we're cognizant of teacher demands and their ability to process different ways of teaching that are more standards-based than content-based. That takes some time to do, to have those kind of conversations. Entering.
I know I also appreciate what we're trying to bring, a comprehensive, you know, opportunity to look at science, social studies, math, English. You could focus on a particular area or a particular grade, you know, like high schoolers at, you know, the late stages, you know, as a summation to a certain extent. But that would provide a thinner evaluation of our educational program, too. And so, I think that goal of kind of having something woven in at every grade level and every content area is useful and feeling like we're presenting a fuller picture to the board over time.
Yeah, I think as long as we keep in mind that with the results policies, the way I think about them are, these are things that we expect students to be able to demonstrate.
Absolutely.
It's like student learning outcomes. Like, these are things we expect them to demonstrate. So, I appreciate Annie's point as well about, you know, this is one subset of students. But I also think that we've gone from what might this look like to now we have one example to, you know, hopefully, what I hear you saying next year is possibly others that might be included in that.
I also try to connect with other districts that are doing coherent governance. Honestly, they don't have result statements that look the same as La Crosse. So, I don't have that, like, collective throbbing brain to draw upon. So, I'm looking for feedback from all of you to help define how this should look as well.
Dr. Jimenez, I have a question then on process and timeline for just like knowing what, like, end-goal report would look like for something like this, since this is a newer result. And, you know, we've just kind of been working on defining what we're looking for. What is the, like, time span on how all of that unfolds?
Well, I would say that the time span for a results policy is, I don't know that there is an end to it, right? You're always wanting to evolve. You're always wanting to change. You're always wanting to look for adaptations to get better over time. So. Let me, I need to think more about your question there. Is it that you're trying to, help me more?
Yeah, it's more just like wondering, you know, if we're tasked with judging, like, reasonable progress.
Sure.
And this is a work in progress. So, we're judging the reasonable progress and the work in progress. Like, where does that train, like, take us in terms of, you know, here's a result. We know what we're expecting. We know, you know, what we're gathering from students.
You know, I think I would take the comments Dr. Cooper Stoll had, if I can steal kind of what you said and correct me if I'm wrong. But basically, like, you know, we've taken a step, right, from where we have been to where we are currently. And now, we want to see that step show a next step as we continue to see the results policies come before us. If the board wanted to see greater progress in a shorter amount of time, the board could ask. ask to bring this results policy back in front of the board at a certain timeframe and ask the administration to produce that results monitoring report with certain criterion added to it. So, you know, as a former governance officer, am I, am I adding context here correctly?
Yeah, I would say just, first of all, for the benefit of newer board members, that there's typically a year given for the administration to prevent evidence on it, correct? What I hear you asking, I think, Annie, so you tell me if I'm misconstruing in any way. But do, does the board currently have a vision for what the end game or the end result may look like where that's concerned?
Yeah.
I think that that's a great question. Dr. Jimenez is correct in as much as, after this is approved, the board can decide if we want to change those indicators for next year, and then the administration will have a year in order to address them. Personally, because we are new, this is a newer policy that we are monitoring, as a board member, I'm willing to give some leeway in terms of what this might look like over the next couple of years. However, at some point, the board will have to determine whether or not we are satisfied with what those indicators are. The question is really, the, the board will need to decide how much leeway the board is willing to give over a period of time. Right now, I would agree with Dr. Lahucki, the report is not what I, ideally would like to see, because I would like to see it assessed in such a way that we can say with confidence that everyone who graduates is able to demonstrate some mastery of that. But I think that we're seeing some reasonable progress in where we're going. So, I am feeling okay for now, but there is no particular explicit time. But I would say if there's a growing consensus among the board that we are not achieving at the rate that we want, we do have the ability to make those changes, and those would come after the approval in order to give that full amount of time. Is that helpful?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. Dr. Engel?
I would just say, my goal would be to identify at least in an area, 75 to 90% of students where we're assessing them. And I think that's possible by next year. So, we would have a report that would capture that broader scope, and then it's a matter of improvement. Typically, what you pay attention to improves, and so I suspect that, you know, these results will improve naturally from one year to the next. And then as we have captured, you know, all of those students in our assessment process, we'll start to be able to have a better picture of what an end state would look like at the end of the year. Not every kid will be proficient every year on everything. And so, you know, then after that point, what does proficient look like? What does reasonable progress look like? But I, I suspect we'll have something identified for 90% of kids next year when we come back.
As we were for results policy 3.5, simply because eighth grade is just a little more captured as far as their choices that they made. So, that was easy to, or easier to get that across the finish line. And so, next year, you will be able to look at, did improvement occur? And this one, data collection is, is more challenging.
Yeah. And also the fact that the indicator, for me at least, at this point in time, doesn't have a specific percentage, as you had mentioned, Dr. Engel, right, that this percentage of students will be meeting proficient or advanced or what, you know, whatever measure we're going to use. So, it is, you know, the technical term, I think, is squishy, right? So, it, it's kind of, it's up in the air at this point in time, and we're still growing into it. So, I, yeah, I think we, we're just, we're still getting there, but I think that, as Dr. Cooper Stoll said, there may come a time that the board wants to change that indicator to actually have a hard percentage. And at that point in time, then we should definitely have that conversation. Other questions or thoughts? Not hearing any. So, as an unofficial poll, are we feeling comfortable that the, with the administration's recommendation that there is reasonable progress at this point in time with our 3.6? I'm not seeing any concerns. So, okay. Thank you, Dr. Lahucki. I appreciate it. We'll move on to our announcements, and so we'll turn it over to Ms. Bowman for the LPEF update.
Yeah, so just one real quick. Tomorrow is the Think a Teacher Day that LPEF is hosting. So, early in the morning, we'll drop off some fruit and donuts and muffins at every school. If you're interested in participating, there's probably still time to reach out to Nell. It's early in the morning, so time is ticking. But that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. And for my announcements, the only thing I have is that this week is Educator Appreciation Week. And so, I really would encourage anybody to thank any educator, any educational employee within the school district, to thank them for what they have done and what they continue to do every day for our students and for our community. They are great representatives of our community, and I just cannot thank them enough for what they do. So, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Engel.
Just a handful of things today. We have our next facilities planning, community informational session tomorrow, May 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Lincoln Middle School. Opportunity for folks to drop in. There'll be a presentation to start and a Q and A thereafter. Good attendance at the last one, a lot of questions addressed. So, hopefully, people take advantage of that if they so choose. The most important thing, though, is surveys going out this week. It'll be hitting mailboxes, every box holder in the school district, and that is the feedback we need to help make our decisions as we move forward. So, excited to, to have that out there and get folks' feedback. As Dr. Jimenez mentioned, May 2 through 6 is Educator and Staff Appreciation Week. We are so thankful for what our educators do and what our support staff do for kids every day. And along with that, May 6 is School Lunch Hero Day. It takes all sorts of folks to make schools run, whether that's our administrative assistants, our custodians, our building engineers, all sorts of folks, and our school lunch heroes as well. Kids ready to learn is crucial each and every day, and if they get food, if they're not hungry, we have a better chance of learning. So, thank you to those folks as well. One last thing I would just add, in terms of educator appreciation, there was a visitation and a memorial service for a longtime educator in our school district, Steve Hall, who passed away recently, really embodied what it meant to be an educator, to lift up a community on the north side at Logan. And it was amazing to see the outpouring of love and appreciation for him and his family. So, that's all I have.
I do have the, some of the handouts, the documents that were provided. So, if the board members want to take a look at those, if they were not able to attend, please feel free. And then, I think we'll move on then to our agenda planning.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 16th, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections.
With the motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Mr. Abraham, we will approve the May 16th, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion has carried, and we'll move on to the board debriefing. Without the position of governance officer, I will take a stab at the board debriefing this time around. And my goal, as I stated before, is that we would, we would take turns over the course of this next year to run the, the debriefing. I think, from my perspective, what we did well in this meeting is definitely the good conversation, the great questions, especially, I appreciate Ms. Bowman's question about reasonable progress. What does that mean? What, what is our end goal? I think those are the great questions and conversations we should be having at this table. So, I would encourage the board members to always bring forward their questions and thoughts, because this is where they should happen. I think that we, the best parts of our meetings are when we have students and community members present. And so, being able to return to the school showcase and the recognitions was, was really a positive part. And I could tell that the energy in the room was greatly improved at the beginning of the meeting by having that, that group here. So, are there any comments that the board would like to add or any things that they would like to add about what worked well and, and/or what could be improved? Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Cooper Stoll.
I understand the importance of making sure that public speakers stay on time. I also understand that if there's one more paragraph to be read particularly by a teacher who's representing the interests of teachers and staff in the district, it's unfortunate that, that we didn't allow him to conclude. And I know that's part of the time, but I feel like on rare occasion, that's lapsed a little. Anyway, I just, I just felt compelled to share that as...
And I appreciate that, and that was hard for me to do. But we also had student speakers, if you recall, who were speaking regarding SROs, and I did have to cut off a student speaker at that time as well. And so, I feel that the interest at this point in time is, since we've had to curtail speakers at the five-minute mark, that we need to maintain that consistency, because otherwise, I think there would be some, some community members who might view that as a concern, that we are allowing some and not all to either proceed past the time. So, that was the decision that I made. But I do appreciate the, the feedback on that, and I definitely will take that into my thinking. So, I appreciate that, Dr. Cooper Stoll. Any other thoughts or comments? Sure.
I'd just like to thank the other educators at the table here. I know that higher education people are represented as well, and thank you for what you guys do in higher education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then, with that, we will be adjourned. Thank you.